Okay, I'd like to call the planning board meeting of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. Introduction of members. To my far left, Steve Yost, we have Doug Cook, Jane Ramsen, our vice chair, Greg Catamatory, our planning director, David Rosen, and then Eric, our senior planner. And I am remote, Rick Noonan on the chair. Under A and Rs, this evening, site plan reviews and preliminary subdivision plans, we have an A and R approval not required plan submitted by Robert Seraphin for Division of Land at Thompson Street, assessors map two forty-one. And that is lot seven.
My name's Robert Seraphin, I live in eighty-two Bray Street. I'm splitting the lot behind me. Because my brother-in-law died, there's a big family feud, who owns what? So we're just splitting the lot in half, and there'd be no problems. It's unbuildable, we've been there forty years, and we don't plan on ever building on it.
Greg or Eric, any background on this one?
Yeah, so just on the microphone, David asked if either of the lots have frontage. This parcel butts, it's kind of a rear lot. And I believe that section of Thompson Street was discontinued quite some time ago. So they're being proposed as unbuildable lots, so the frontage question isn't really called at this time.
Questions by members?
Does writing not a building lot on it make it? Put it in the deed or anything like that?
Well, it's certainly, the plan recording will reflect that it's an unbuildable lot, so it's, planning board's not making a determination of zoning. But, or zoning compliance, but as it's deemed a not a buildable lot, there'd have to be additional action for it to become a buildable lot.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Jane. Any other questions? If there are none, I'll accept the motion.
I move that we approve the approval not required plan for Division of Land at Thompson Street, assessors map two forty-one, lot seven.
The move.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsen, second one by Doug Cook, I just need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member, we gotta, we're down a few. Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Rosen? And member Yost?
Yes.
Did I say member Noonan?
Yes, first in line.
I did, okay, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so second on the agenda this evening, approval not required plans submitted by Daniel Fonzie at seaside care of seaside legal solutions for Division of Land at thirty-five Massasoia Road, assessors map two thirty-one, lot seventeen. At the request of the applicant, this is continued toward June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting. I don't know that we need to take a.
You could just make a motion to continue.
I move that we continue the approval not required plan for Division of Land at thirty-five Massasoia Road to our next meeting on June twenty-sixth.
So moved.
We have a second, we have a motion by Jane Ramsen, second one by David Rosen, roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Yost?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to public hearings, in accordance with the provisions of Master General Law Forty-eight, section five, and the Gloucester zoning ordinance, section one point one one, the planning board shall consider the following proposed zoning amendment. Amend Gloucester zoning ordinance by adding a new section, five point two one demolition delay with the purpose of preserving historical significant structures. So this is a continued public hearing, we're going to open that public hearing and then take a vote.
So you can make a motion as chair just to close the public hearing, and based on the action of the city council, P and D, as well as the full council this past Tuesday, the measure's been withdrawn, so there could just be a simple motion to take no action by the board.
Okay, so I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing, section two point, or five point two one demolition delay.
So you can just do that as chair, which you just did.
Thank you, all right, so we'll close that. And now, Jane, if you have something prepared.
All right. Oh, I move that we take no action on section five point two one demolition delay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Yost?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Next under public hearings this evening, in accordance with the provisions of Master General Law Forty-eight and section five, Gloucester zoning ordinance, section one point one one, the planning board shall consider the following proposed zoning amendment. Amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance, section five point five, floodplain overlay district to satisfy the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program and clarify standards, so I'll open the public hearing.
I will share my screen. Everybody see that, okay?
Yeah.
So you'll recall, we had a brief discussion about this at the initiation stage. And I'm going to go through just a brief agenda with, just so that everybody has an understanding of what's happening, a little background on the National Flood Insurance Program, and their mapping tools, where folks can get information. There's a website managed by FEMA that shows what changes have occurred related to the new mapping. And then specifically, the language amendments to the floodplain overlay district that are required by the National Flood Insurance Program to stay a community that's eligible for its community members to access flood insurance. So a National Flood Insurance Program was established back in nineteen sixty-eight, I don't know the exact date that Gloucester became a member, a community that participates, probably close to that, if not, the early seventies. Took the Congress quite a bit of time, this was in reaction to substantial damage that occurred back in the Great Mississippi Flood of nineteen twenty-seven. Took them several decades to come up with a structure to assist folks during natural disasters. The program provides flood insurance, enabling property owners in participating communities, again, which Gloucester is, to purchase subsidized flood insurance and also be able to apply for damage reimbursement during storm events. Additionally, the purpose of the mapping is and associated programming is also to limit flood risk. And that's through responsible floodplain management and also adoption of local regulation. As you're aware, ours, our standards are more stringent at this point than the national standards. But again, we have to have reference to the most current information in order to stay current and in good standing with the program. So the National Flood Insurance Program calculates risk by performing flood insurance studies. We associated with the mapping product that has been provided to the city and went through a public review process and adoption. A new study was conducted in the last couple of years, and so we now have a set of flood insurance rate maps that will go into effect July eighth. They are the latest information that any jurisdiction will look at, once they've been adopted, but there's a six-month period for communities to make that reference to that mapping to stay in compliance with their standards. So again, these are tools that are used for reference to apply state building code as well as National Flood Plane Construction Standards. And again, they're periodically updated, and ours will be up to date as of July eighth. I think I showed this at the last initiation meeting of this ordinance, most of Essex County, the flood map panels, which are the rectangles on the screen, the ones in purple are those that were updated, associated with this flood insurance study. It's mostly inland areas, a lot of our, you know, small pocketed flooding areas that had been designated in the past in the interior, much land owned by Gloucester have had a reduction in their flood risk. And then there are some areas that have slightly increased expanse of floodplain, but it's a fairly minor change. And again, folks can take a look at the mapping changes online. And eventually, we will upload the new maps to our online mapping system. And they're available at the community development office in the conservation office. Zooming in, again, the now blue panels are the ones that have been updated, red, there has been no change. Aside from the remapping of some of those areas based on new engineering study, they also have incorporated all of the changes that have occurred since the last time we had mapping in twenty sixteen. So if folks filed for map amendments, they're now referenced on the plan, the firm panels as well. So again, we're at a new snapshot in time that has the most current information as of July. Just an example of one of those panels to kind of get a sense of how to navigate the FEMA map changer website. The purple areas have had a reduction in their flood extent or flood elevation. And the yellow areas are those that have expanded slightly. You can see there's small undulations around those particular areas. And again, we'll end up with a final plan set in digital format that will just have the usual coded blue and any associated elevation that have been determined for those particular areas. So on to the actual language itself that we reviewed at planning board two or three meetings back. This is the biggest one, with just a change of the date of the effective date of the mapping, last was July nineteenth, twenty eighteen, and it's now going to be reflective of July eighth, twenty twenty-five. So those two date references in section five point, five point three. Very particular. We used a state model floodplain ordinance that was developed in twenty twenty when we developed the floodplain overlay district. And there are a couple of tweaks that, again, the National Flood Insurance Program wants very specific reference to who the state coordinator is, as well as program specialists, where they can be found, associated with our jurisdiction, as well as they wanted an additional flood zone identified, those are the different types of flood zones that are in Massachusetts. There are some unnumbered A zones, which were not referenced. So again, very simple technical changes. And then the last change proposed was really about the way that we've been operating under our own standards. The language specifically dealing with AE zones. And there was some discussion about this in terms of the more floodplain area you have on a lot, the more you're potentially allowed to alter. As the not to exceed number that was enacted in the last, in the development of this ordinance was ten percent. And we do have some unique situations where folks own salt marsh or subtitle lands, and that further inflates that potential for alteration, so we wanted to make that clear. NGDVD and NAVD, sorry, National Atlantic Vertical Datum Five is about coincident with the high watermark. So we wanted to make it explicitly clear that we're talking about the floodplain that encumbers the land area of a parcel, not areas that are already underwater or tidal. So these two adjustments have been made to the standard to make sure that we are considering ten percent alteration, but only of what's kind of dry land. I chose an example from another community, just for illustrative purposes. So the lot in the center of the screen that is in orange, you can see there's that green line that kind of bisects the property, kind of top to bottom of page. And the bottom area with the stippled area is all salt marsh. And the lands above it are in floodplain, but are not inundated on a regular basis. So on the old definition, you would consider the entire land area the parcel, and then apply that ten percent number to the parcel, which would kind of give somebody a greater benefit for owning subtitle land. And what we're proposing is to eliminate those lands below elevation five from the consideration of the calculation. Just makes it clear, this is how the building commissioner and the conservation agent, who is also the floodplain coordinator, have been interpreting this. But it's just for perfect clarity, so that there aren't folks that might try to take advantage of counting lands that are typically underwater. So that is a summary, and we are in a public hearing, so I'll entertain certainly questions from the board, but also we can see if there are any folks online, as there's nobody in the auditorium that, huh? And it looks like we have staff.
Yes.
Staff that are online, so I guess we can move to questions from the board.
So I think we had a pretty good discussion about this at the last stage when we, and there have been no changes to the language since we discussed it before. So if that's the case, I have no additional questions, but except to say this has now come back from, where are we in the process?
So the planning board initiated the proposed amendment, it was forwarded to the city council, placed on their agenda, it was referred back out for your public hearing. From here, when you conclude, it will go to the planning and development for their consideration and recommendation, and then back to the full city council for a public hearing.
Any other questions from board members? Clearing none, so a simple motion to.
So first, as chair, you can close the public hearing.
I'll close the public hearing.
Yep, and I move that we recommend amending the Gloucester zoning ordinance, section five point five floodplain overlay district to satisfy the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program and clarify standards. We're recommending it to this.
So you're recommending the city council adopt?
We're recommending that the city council adopt this amendment.
Motion by Jane Ramsen, I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Rosen has a second, thank you, just a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Yost?
Yes.
Okay. That was easy. So next, under our agenda this evening, a comprehensive plan update. Laura Sweeney is going to join us from Jay and Ram, Laura Goldson, provide an update on the public comment period for the final draft of the comprehensive plan. And Laura, and remote, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
Just fine.
All right, great, let me just share my screen. Okay, so I think this will be a relatively brief presentation. It's great to be at this stage in the process with you all, we're really honing in into the finish line. I'm going to cover, you know, where we are in the process, as always, we can briefly view the comprehensive plan layout, implementation matrix, what it all includes now, it's all put together, and then the next steps heading toward a potential adoption vote. So we're right here at the very end of the phase four. We've been with you all since June of twenty twenty-three, and now two years later, we're really wrapping it up. As you know, phase four deliverables are the designed comprehensive plan and the action plan or implementation matrix, which spells out who's doing what when, lets you track how you're doing on strategy, as well as identifies metrics that you can track how you're progressing in terms of indicators of success. Some of the things we've been up to recently, we're analyzing the department comments, designing the comprehensive plan layout. You know, we did the goal prioritization survey with the public, and we summarized the results of the public survey as well as the staff feedback, we laid out the plan in a visual way, revised the action plan and implementation matrix with staff capacity, comments, and metrics and things like that. Revised the comprehensive plan draft with any little things that needed to get updated, typos or anything we caught in the process. And now we feel we're at a point where it's ready to be released for a kind of final round of public comment. We expect that to run through the end of June, and then be able to come back to you in July with any final feedback we've received. And tentatively, you know, based on that feedback, have you be prepared to vote to adopt the comprehensive plan at that time? So at this moment, I will stop sharing this screen and pull up the full plan, if I can get my computer to cooperate. Okay, there we go. Share the browser, yeah. So just to kind of, I'm just going to scroll through to give you a sense of, you know, the layout, hopefully you've had a chance to peruse it a little bit already. We start with a dedication from the mayor, acknowledgements. And then it flows through the content that you've already reviewed, so that content should be familiar to you, it's just now laid out in a more appealing and hopefully clear way, all the history of what we've done and the phases. A little bit of a summary of the existing conditions, but we know there's that whole separate document of existing conditions, profile summary and workbooks that go into much more detail than that, and then the community engagement. We really celebrate the fact that you've got well over the goal for community engagement, really over three thousand eight hundred ninety-four participation touchpoints, which was far over the goal, and thus not including any public comments we might receive as well. So here's your vision statement. Now the goals are, include some priority goals, the overall top priority goals, and then ones that are the top by theme. And then we have just reordered the way the goals are presented, so that they now flow where we can highlight the top priority goal first, and then list the others, so. And we just kind of, you know, it's a list, a pretty straightforward list with some illustrations and photographs of the different goals and strategies, through all the different core themes, with some relevant maps from the existing conditions pulled in, just to help add some of the clarity there. And then we conclude with get to the, briefly sort of about the implementation matrix, which is again, a separate document, but you have kind of what's included in that, and then the glossary, so. Are there any, any comments on the layout? Sorry, I don't see how to like, stop sharing my screen, which is weird. So maybe I will just other, you know, close window? Yes, perfect.
So comments about layout, members?
Well, it looks beautiful.
Okay.
Has it really been two years, though, seriously?
Yes, it has.
Took us three years to do a harbor plan, so I'm impressed.
And then, well, I guess I will carry on.
I had one question, is the PDF document, does it conform to like the usual accessibility standards?
Yeah, we do try to choose colors and fonts that would be more readable and have enough contrast for those with, who need like an e-reader or who might be colorblind or something like that, so that there's a level accessible, you know, accessibility to it.
I'm thinking of also just explicitly, explicitly screen readers for the blind, well.
Right, PDFs have an accessibility feature, I think he's asking you if it complies with that Adobe PDF feature.
I can double check that we exported it into that format, I believe we did, but that's a good point, that make sure what goes up on the website has that tag for not print, but rather digital consumption, so that e-readers will be able to pick it up.
And this be, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
How will this be distributed to the public for them to comment on it?
So we will put, we will link it on the project website, and also link a survey on related to that, so let me see if I can find the browser here.
Just jumping as well, Alex Kaufman, Community Development Director. We'll also work with the mayor's office and the communications director to really get this out in the same way that we did for the survey of the goals, to make sure we're hitting as much as the community as we possibly can and get a good representation.
Yeah, your prior efforts have been very successful, so I'm sure that this will work as well.
So I don't know if this is a question for Laura or for, but is there, I mean, you guys like to count everything, so is there tracking of the unique hits to the website since it's been up? I mean, do we know what the traffic has been for, you know, Joe Q Public trying to drill down on the comprehensive plan initiative?
That's something we could look up for you, I don't know it off the top of my head, but those are analytics we can pull.
Yeah. Just trying to get over the four thousand count, right? I tried to get a couple of high school kids to come, but they wouldn't show up, so.
So just to show you really quick, for the feedback survey, it's very simple, so this would also be a link, right? Kind of that goes along with the plan. Very simple, overall, how well do you think the final draft reflects a community's priorities and values? How likely are you to support the implementation of this plan as it's currently drafted? And then just a catch-all box for any additional comments, concerns, or suggestions, that then we'll do a more qualitative analysis of themes on, at the end.
This might be a question for Alex, but will there be something in the Gloucester Daily Times about this? So that the public knows?
Yes, I'm working with Pam to do an article in the Times. We can look at other avenues like we did before, maybe the Gilnet or some other networks and community groups that we partnered with in getting the survey out, but certainly the GDT.
Any other comments from board members?
Laura, did you have more to your PowerPoint, or was that it?
I did have a little more, because I also wanted to talk about what's inside the implementation matrix, which now has, you know, we know that one of the steps to do for the city following the adoption is to form a comprehensive plan implementation committee that can help measure the progress toward achieving your goals, you know, work with the spreadsheet in there. help measure the progress toward achieving your goals, you know, work with the spreadsheet in there, help coordinate it with different city boards and commissions and prepare regular updates. You, you are already familiar with this spreadsheet of the who's doing what, when responsible entities, funding, sequencing and like staff capacity notes. But one of the things that's new in there now is our metrics. So we work with staff to select metrics that will be meaningful, but also practical that has data that you have access to that can easily pulled so that we aren't creating unnecessary homework for you all, but it can be set up, you know, where you're checking it once a year and just kind of seeing if there's any progress made on those metrics. So for example, in core theme one, which is about housing and economic development, you know, tracking the subsidized housing inventory and and the, with the best data available, you know, looking at households served by CDBG housing programs. For core theme four, which is related to transportation, looking at the ridership of the MBTA or the Cape and Transportation Authority EV chargers installed, et cetera. So there's really between three and five metrics for each core theme that you can then link data sources and, and have a discuss, the implementation committee can discuss together kind of what with staff, what a, what a meaningful target might be that you want to try to reach as a goal and track progress on those. And then there is a tab also just, which just is a straight list of the strategies with the narratives and a way to indicate whether that's a completed strategy in progress or decided not to pursue or not yet started. And really that's the view that I think would be helpful to have as a, maybe a view only option on the website so that kind of helps with public transparency on implementation. So that's just a little screenshot of the who's doing what, when, but if you want, I can pull up the, anything with the implementation matrix that you might want to look at. But that is more of an internal working document, practical document that can be updated and so forth, but we like to have a public view if, if possible. And that really is all I have for my presentation.
Laura, I have two questions. The first one is in the main comp plan, you, you referenced priorities, but I don't see priorities in the matrix. Or am I missing something?
So we, in the matrix, we follow, we just follow the same order. Listing as in the comp plan, but you're right, the, the comp plan is the one that flags the priorities, but if that's something you would like to add to the implementation matrix, that's an easy change to just highlight, you know, the ones that are the top priority, but they will always be the ones listed first under each core theme.
Yeah. I personally am not going to be checking this matrix frequently, but I don't know if it's something that would be helpful to other people who will be. And the other thing was, I, I think this is the first time I've heard of the comp plan implementation committee. So who, who are those people? Who is that going to be? And what are they doing?
I can weigh in on that. I think we touched on it a little bit at the last planning board meeting, but the mayor will appoint the committee members and the idea is to have a representation from several boards and committees that are involved in the recommendations. So some representation from the planning board, CBA, all the different boards and committees that are tacked in the implementation matrix.
So on the, in the plan 2000, they have a similar component. It was called PERC, Plan Implementation and Review Committee. The ad hoc committee that took on a life of its own and yeah, so we'll, we'll have a
Did it work?
About that. No, terribly wrong, bad. You know, they, they were, they were scheduling meetings, public hearings with the hospital when I, when I first joined the board and it was so essentially that, that ad hoc committee will report through the planning board. And then us to the community.
So I think this time around, just to make sure that the board is really being directed by staff, that it would fall under Community Development Department and we would work with them on making sure that they're tracking metrics and doing annual reporting. So it'd be definitely a staff and committee collaboration.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, as you look at all the different strategies, there are many. And there are many that are assigned to the Community Development Department, but there are also a number that are really the responsibility of other boards, committees and commissions and other volunteer efforts. So I think it's, the implementation committee is, is to catalog what's been done. And then also be a little bit of, you know, kind of a liaison to maybe even let people know what's been identified if there, there could be committees that have now been defined as probably the responsible party to make sure that this document is, there's an awareness of it, of, of what the community has, has asked for, what their aspirations are and how those things can be achieved through these strategies. But it's, it's not to be necessarily a separate implementing body. It's really to kind of create awareness and also track rather than just be a new committee to. So it's a little bit of a misnomer, I would say, but you know, it's that accountability of, you know, what's been done. And maybe, you know, try to raise awareness of things that maybe haven't been initiated that were identified in the plan.
Yeah, I've had other communities call it the comprehensive plan coordination committee or something like that because they really aren't, you know, directing staff or anything or implementing things directly, but it is helpful to have some extra public awareness and coordination between different boards and committees. You can go out to different boards and committees, meet with them, discuss shared priorities in the comprehensive plan. What are you working on this year, that kind of thing? And really from a spirit of curiosity and collaboration, not, you know, you know, trying to direct or control what is happening in any department or committee.
They'd be the ones responsible for updating the, the, the third sheet that you added to the spreadsheet that was sort of more for public consumption and you mentioned having a read only view.
Yes. So maybe it's helpful to actually just pull that up. So this is just, and I know it's small, which is probably why it's not overly helpful, but to share it on a big, on a screen. But, you know, it just lists the core themes and the strategies in order. It's very simple with a, you know, a spot where you can, with a pulldown menu and you can mark where things are at. If it's white, it's not yet started. If it's red, you know, it decided not to pursue in progress and so forth. So just if there's some, you know, public have weighed in a lot and they probably have certain things that they care a lot about and kind of want to check in every once in a while and see how a topic is doing that they, that they care about. And it's a way to celebrate and showcase all the work that's, you know, going to be happening in the next 10 years.
Right. So I guess you're confirming that it would be this committee that updates this for the public consumption.
Yes, I, yes, ideally. I'm sure it would be in collaboration with staff, but yes, that would be one of the roles is to work with staff to help update the metrics and, and the spreadsheets and, and make sure everyone's, you know, aware of it and so forth.
Thank you.
Anything else on your agenda this evening, Laura?
No other, just, just to say thank you. And it's been wonderful getting to meet with you all and work with Gloucester. It's a really special community that you live in. And I look forward to, you know, the summer months and taking little day trips there with my family. And I'm excited to see this plan, you know, get, get implemented. And I'll be circling back with you all in July, hopefully, and we'll see what the, what the public comments have to say. And meanwhile, we can send, you know, we'll send little updates to, to Alex too, and let him know kind of how the survey is going and things, so. But I hope you
Other question as far as public accessibility. I mean, are there, are copies produced? And, you know, and, and available kind of a thing, or is it relying a hundred percent on sort of the digital access?
We, we can do that, Rick. We did that for the survey. We had printed copies at the library and the senior center and the YMCA and other places.
And I'm fine electronically, but there's some folks that are tactile and like to hold on to stuff. And put it on the shelf. Any other comments before we let Laura go? Hearing none. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. See you later. Have a good start to your summer.
Thank you.
See you next time.
Okay, under other business, we've got a couple of minutes to approve. We'll start with the April 17th. Somebody's got it available. And Catherine, I apologize for not mentioning you as a staff because you always hide out in the attendees list and, but Catherine, our scribe been doing terrific work. Thank you.
Chair, have a question?
Go ahead.
I thought we reviewed the April 17 minutes last time.
I wasn't present, so. Catherine, do you have that to be true?
I do, yes.
Okay. Let's just move on to May 4.
Well, in the minutes of May 1st, it says we reviewed the minutes of April 3rd.
So that's a mistake.
Okay.
So I understand the confusion.
So we did review April 17th that day.
Yes, as the agenda shows, but I did not change it in the actual line.
I see that. Yep. Okay, minutes of May 1st then we're on.
Correct.
Ball them up in a second.
Okay. Yeah, Catherine, thanks. These minutes are really, really great. I just have one comment on the May 1st, which is remove the term low hanging fruit. On the review of planning board initiatives.
Any other questions or comments on May 1st?
The only thing, as I'm preparing the report out on the proposed amendment to three point, or section three, there was also some discussion of the zoning board's opinion or recommendation around the amendment. In addition, I'll provide all of that, but I didn't know if there needed to be some mention of that because we did, we did continue the hearing so that it could be referred for review and recommendation from the zoning board. And they, I, I think maybe I can't remember if I read the email or if I characterized their, their position at, at one point.
You weren't at this meeting, were you?
I was at this meeting.
Oh.
Because I explained the next steps.
That's great.
So it could be something like Director Calimatory reviews zoning boards, recommendation and explains next steps, just so that there's a reference to it. But I'll provide to the city council, the links to the recording of their meeting as well as the report itself. And I can send something to you, Catherine.
Great, thanks.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of May 1, 2025.
A motion by Jane Remson. I need a second.
So moved.
To Cook. Roll call vote and I'm going to abstain.
Member Noonan?
Abstain.
Member Remson?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Yoast?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's it.
Yep. I just wanted to report that the Housing Subcommittee has decided to meet on May 22nd from 3:00 to 5:00 PM to discuss the things that we, we agreed to discuss last time. And we're going to sort of meet every Thursday for four to six meetings. What?
I said ever.
Yeah, forever. Until I'm 85. Yeah, for four to six Thursdays and, and then we'll decide if we want to meet more frequently again after that.
Okay, just one other administrative thing. So Jane had put out an email on May 10th regarding Hank McCarl's service at St. John's Episcopal at 48 Middle Street. That's happening tomorrow from 3:00 to 5:00. So other than that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion. I just need a second, please.
I'll second, please.
Thank you, Doug. You're doing great today. Just a roll call vote.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Remson?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Yoast?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Catherine. Thanks, Eric.